All right, here we go. Thank you for attending the Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment for our Monday, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Real quick, I will read over the meeting procedures. All persons in attendance at the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn phones to vibrate off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside of the meeting room. Interruptions and other interference with the orderly conduct of the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The chair may terminate a speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists an improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by three-thirty P M. On the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because of the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission business is conducted first, followed by the Board of Adjustment business. The chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicant to come forward to the presenter's table, state his/her or their names and addresses for the record, and explain his/her their request. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The chair will then ask for public comments on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker per agenda item unless the chair allows a speaker additional time. The chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists an improper conduct or remarks. When the chair recognizes a speaker, he or she may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by the recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant's. All comments are to be directed towards the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. Please do not repeat comments already made by the previous speakers. The chair reserves the right to ask a group and similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the chair will close the public comment period on the agenda item. No further public comment will be taken after this point. The chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues arise during public comment. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then continue its discussion on the agenda item, and the chair will entertain a motion on it. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made and seconded, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will develop findings of facts for conditional use permit and variance applications and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on an agenda item, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at six P M. and will continue until all agenda items have been heard or until ten P M. No new agenda items shall be considered after nine forty-five P M. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may, at its discretion, continue an item that is on the floor at ten P M. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date, time, preferably the immediately following Tuesday at six P M. And no further public comment or public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment through the chair may modify these preceding measures prior to or an agenda item. Okay. Okay, first item on the agenda is Planning Commission and the approval of the March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes. Does anybody have any comments on the meeting minutes?
This is Mike. I'll make the motion to pass the minutes as written.
Okay, anybody care to make a second?
This is Timothy. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented by Mike, a second by Tim. I will take a vote. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry. I vote aye.
And Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. The mini minutes have been approved. We'll go on to old business. There's none. No new business, so we move on straight on to the Board of Adjustment. Again, we will go first with the approval of the March twenty-fifth, twenty-four meeting minutes. Anybody have any comments, questions on the minutes? Anybody care to make a motion?
This is Mike. I'll make the motion to pass the minutes as written.
This is Tim. I'll second that motion.
Motion to approve the Board of Adjustment meeting minutes for March twenty-fifth by Mike, second by Tim. I'll take a vote. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. The Board of Adjustment meeting minutes have been approved. Go on to, right on into new business. We have variance application eleven dash B dash twenty-four by Douglas Brenn, part of government lots three and four and lot one, Sulem subdivision, section twenty-nine, township one forty-three, range thirty-two, Lakeport Township on Cabacona Lake, a recreational development lake, parcels nineteen point two nine point zero three one zero zero and nineteen point four four point zero zero one zero zero. The applicants are requesting a variance from section five oh six of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed guest cottage that exceeds the seven hundred square foot in area and fifteen feet in height. And you may come to the podium, please. To the presenter's table, actually, sorry. Yep, go ahead. Both of you can join in. If you could, please, just state your name and address, and then just give us a brief description on what your request is.
My name is Douglas Brenn. I live at three five nine two seven, county thirty-nine, La Porte, Minnesota. And I am here requesting a variance for the Shoreland Ordinance five zero six. I would like an existing structure on our property to be designated as a guest cottage. It currently doesn't meet the requirements in that it's the original cabin was over the fifteen-foot maximum height level, and the square footage exceeds the seven hundred square feet. I guess I would, I would like to say that, you know, when my family purchased the cabin, it was a little bit different in the layout. The, uh, the east side of the house had an entryway, and there was a back porch. And there was an exterior entrance to our partial basement, kind of off to the side there. So, and, and, and on the south side, where the living room is now, there was a large screen porch. On the west side, there was a set of steps and an entryway. When we determined that we would, we would need to subdivide our property, at one, at one point, my family owned the two, two properties to the east. We subdivided a lot and we sold the other house. There, there was just no way, there, there was a period of time when we were, we were paying nine thousand dollars to the county for property taxes, and we could see that in our retirement, that was going to be unaffordable. So, we, we didn't want to, but we subdivided the property. When we did that, we, we recognized that to maximize our privacy and the neighbors' privacy, we, and, and to make the kitchen more usable, because it was a lot, it was a tiny kitchen, and it was a lock-through area. So, we closed off the east entrance, and the stairway, the cover over the stairway was just a, a simple plywood sheet with a hinge, and, and you had to lift it up, and you had to duck. So, when, when we were re-siding, I took the opportunity to, using the, the, the foundation, I mean, I didn't change the layout at all. I just extended it up a little bit and put new siding on it. The living room addition, really, it was pretty minor in terms of additional square footage. And then, we decided that we needed a, since we were going to have one main entry on the west side, it needed to be a pretty nice one, so we, we kind of went a little bit, little bit bigger than what we needed to, but we built a nice entryway. So, consequently, you know, between the pluses and minuses, yeah, we ended up with a little bit more square feet in that, in the cabin than it originally was, but we didn't build it any higher. So, anyway, during the, the board's site visit, two, two items came up, two issues came up. One of them was the, the hot tub. When, when we, we received the hot tub as a thank you from our eldest daughter for paying for five years of college. She showed up one day with a hot tub for us, and so we put it together, and, and we thought, well, what are we going to put it on? Well, we just bought some pavers, and unfortunately, I didn't, I didn't research it well enough. I, I knew there was, there wasn't a permit necessary for the hot tub, but I didn't realize that by putting the pavers down, I was going to be a non-compliant. So, anyway, I have filled out an application for a permit for that and submitted to the Environmental Services Department, so that's taken care of. And then, it was also pointed out to me that, you know, I, I hung a shower off the side of the cabin in the area where the, the east entry was, and I, it was pointed out to me that it needs to be hooked up to the, to the septic system. I was unaware of that, and quite honestly, when, when I decided to do that, it would have been less work to hook it up to the septic system than to dig a dry well, you know, and fill it with rocks and all this stuff. But anyway, it's, it was disconnected for, for the winter, of course, but I have, I am not gonna reconnect it, and I will wait and see what the outcome of this meeting is to find out whether now we'll be digging into the, into the septic system, because if we're allowed to build a new house, then that will be connected to the existing septic system. So, that, that will be a non-issue. So, those, those two, two things have been addressed. And it was, it was raised, a question was raised by someone in the environmental services department about the, the little the area that covers the, the steps, and, and she wanted to know if, you know, we bumped it out or did anything. But that's, that's the existing original footprint of the outside staircase. So, it's just, it's just a little bit higher so we didn't have to bend down. So, I guess, as far as what our plans are, you know, we have, we have three other structures on the property. One of them was a boathouse that has been in place since the late sixties. It has a, it has a log top on it that's completely open on the inside. It's been used for just kind of recreational activities for the kids. You know, we had a pool table in there, we had ping-pong table, that kind of thing, a T V. There's no water, there's no bathroom, there's no sleeping arrangements. It's just a kind of a recreational gathering point for the family, and that, that's how we use it. That's how we plan on continuing to use it. The twenty-four by thirty-six garage that was built a few years ago, that has a, finished upstairs. We decided to finish, we, we decided to go with room trusses and, and build a room up there because my wife was a past president of the Minnesota State Button Society, and she's, she had a lot of paperwork and equipment relating to, really relating to that, that hobby of hers. So, that's, that's pretty much her domain. In fact, she's talking about putting one of those electronic keypads and not giving me the combination. So, I'm not sure what's going to go on up there. But, anyway, and then, the other garage that we just built last year, we, we winter in the southwest, and we found, since we sold our house in the Twin Cities, traditionally, what we've, we've always done in the past, when we leave for the winter, we just pack the truck up with everything that we didn't want to freeze, and we would take it home. We decided to build a garage and then put a heating unit in there and keep the, the heat on all winter so we didn't have to dispose of, of things that we didn't want to freeze. So, that's pretty much, that, the cabin, the whole property, we've got a three, three-quarter bath. That's, that's all it is, and that's all it's ever going to be. And, you know, we really need to build a permanent year-round structure. And we just felt that if we worked with an architect to design a modest house, and we keep it in mind that we, we wanted to cut down the minimum number of trees, we kind of fit it in a certain spot, and, and it, it ended up straddling the property line. And that, I guess, does two things. It, it really pretty much makes it impossible to, if, if we're allowed to build this house, straddling that line, it pretty much makes it impossible to ever subdivide the property, because right now, it's two lots. And, you know, with the house back in the middle, I mean, it's, it really is, we're doing this with the idea that it's going to be a legacy property for our family. That's how we've always approached it. We're, I don't know how this works, but we're certainly willing to stipulate that, that the property is not going to be subdivided further. I can't think of anything else. Everything we've done, with the exception of the boathouse, and that was done in the sixties, but everything is nicely clear of the hundred-foot setback. I don't think the cabin, the cabin is actually further, further back, you know, than it needs to be. So, as far as what it looks like from the lake, I, I think it's pretty, it really doesn't stick out. And we've got good tree coverage. We planted a lot of trees. My family has been planting trees since they, they bought the original property, so, and we continue to do so. So, I think it's a pretty, pretty nice spot for a house. The, the one thing, you know, if we were forced to go redesign the house and place it completely on lot one of the Sulem subdivision, it would have to be, it would have to be vertical in nature. I mean, it would have to be a multi-story house, as would if we were to remodel the cabin. The layout of the cabin really precludes any sort of expansion other than a little bit more toward the lake and to go vertically. So, we feel that a story and a half house, you know, in, in amongst the trees is a pretty good option for, for us and for the people that use the lake.
Okay, perfect. All right, I appreciate that information. As there's nobody in the audience, I'm going to go ahead and just jump and open for public comment for the public, for the record, and then I can close public comments, so we're good to go.
She's here.
She can comment with you. Yes. So, okay, thank you very much. I wanted to say right off the bat that I appreciated you staking out the house plan. It's always nice to see exactly how it's going to be set up with each corner, with each little section. You had that staked out very nicely. Thank you for addressing some of the issues that were brought up during the lot views. I had some questions on that myself. So, you have already been told about the possible violations, and you're planning on correcting them. You have a land use permit that you're going to be dropping off and taking care of that, like, real soon for that one X thing. Perfect. It's already done. Okay, perfect. Since you mentioned the information on the bump out, since the applicant mentioned that it was already there, the footprint was already there. Since he's already extended it, the height, they put the roof on, does he have to do another similar after-the-fact permit for that as well, for that stairway?
For that external stairs to the basement, no.
Okay, so that, we're cleared on that. Okay, perfect. All right, questions then I have for you before I open to the others. You mentioned that you have the crawl space for the partial basement.
Yeah.
Do you have bedrooms down there, or no? Are both your bedrooms upstairs? It's just?
No.
Okay.
No, there's, there's hardly room for the, the pump and the hot water heater.
So, basically, utility sort of stuff is down there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the attic is just, is just insulation.
Well, any other, any members have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
This is Mike. In regards to the shower, if, just to make sure I'm clear of what you're saying, you have no intention of hooking that up, but if this, you are allowed to build the house, you would then, at that time, hook it up?
I, I would, not necessarily. I would, I would investigate what it involved. I would have to, I would have to meet with my...
Would, would you be open to a condition, then, that that shower cannot be used unless it is hooked to the system? It has to be disconnected until at such point?
Absolutely, yeah. I, I, like I say, it was, it was just a no-brainer on my part, you know. I, I just didn't, I just didn't realize it, I thought.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Because you mentioned, this is Veronica speaking, you mentioned that you already disconnected, doesn't have the showerhead, so right now, it's not in use, and you're not exactly sure. So, you've already met the criteria for disconnecting it.
Yeah.
But if you decide to put it on, you're going to look into seeing, hooking it actually up to the septic as the Minnesota statute?
Yeah, and I, I can, I can leave it, I mean, I can leave it as is. I mean, I, I installed valves, you know, to shut it off on the inside, but I can, I can disconnect all of the plumbing, or part, part of the plumbing, because it feeds a, it also feeds us an outdoor spigot, you know, that we use, so.
Okay.
I would have to maybe do some creative plumbing there to not use the shower and use the...
The spigot still?
Yeah.
And you mentioned that you had subdivided the tracks with the administrative subdivision back in two thousand and sixteen, sold the two off, and you are going to keep the one. And you already mentioned yourself that if a condition was placed on moving forward, if this gets approved so that you could build the home, being it right be in the middle, that you would be open to a condition stating that the property could never be subdivided. As you mentioned, you want to keep it in the, in the family for...
Yes, absolutely.
Good with that as well. Okay.
This is Tim. How big is your family?
I'm sorry?
How big is your family with the kids and grandkids?
We have two daughters, and they, they each have two kids. So, my, I have a sister. She lives in Buffalo, New York, and, you know, she's, she's basically the only, the, other than our kids and their kids, she's the only one that has any interest in, in the property, you know. So, it's, it's a small family, and, and, you know, you never, you never know how it's going to turn out. You know, you, you become invested in a, in a piece of real estate, and you think to yourself, well, my kids will certainly embrace it as much as I do, but, you know, things change. But, yeah, we're not, we're not, we're going to keep it, we're going to keep it as just one unit as a legacy property and figure out how to hand it down.
This is Ken. Just for, make sure the record, Eric, the current guest cabin, or what was proposed to be the guest cabin, is in fact under seven hundred square feet, not including the entryway. I think the, the, I want to confirm that. Did your staff do that? I noticed on the tax thing, it listed as about six hundred eighty square feet. Is, is that...
The entry that was permitted in two thousand and ten is ten by twelve, so that put it over the seven hundred square feet. Prior to that addition, it was within the seven hundred square feet.
I'm, I'm not sure I...
They added the covered entry in two thousand and ten on the west side, the steps leading up to the house that are covered with a roof, and then there's a bump-out entry area. That addition caused it to go over the seven hundred square feet.
But, but without that, the basic cabin would be under the seven hundred square feet.
Correct.
So, the entryway. How about the area of the deck? Can you, how big is the deck that you have around the current home? There's a fairly large deck. I don't know when it was constructed.
Four, four, fourteen by sixteen, I believe.
And it's kind of multi-leveled, but it's still all total sizing. It's fourteen by sixteen, including...
Yeah.
And the reason, the reason that I, I did it that way is I was, we, not the, not the most recent house that we have had in the cities, but the prior one, we had just built a, a deck on that house, and, and they were, the piece, the, we sold it to a developer, and they were going to tear the house down, and so we bought, I bought the lumber back. So, when I designed the deck for the cabin, I used the lumber from that previous deck and, and made it fit the opening, so I ended up with multiple levels.
Okay.
Because I, because I didn't have long enough continuous lumber.
My, my point I was trying to get at, Eric, it's not typical when people want to have a guest cabin to, to have as much area like a deck like that. Would we normally allow on a guest cabin to do those kinds of additional structures? Large deck, large entryway on a, on a cabin? Typically, we've been pretty consistent about seven hundred square foot, footprint. Would you, would, would we normally, would you normally approve a deck on a cabin, a guest cabin, if somebody came in of that size?
If, if the deck is in compliance with setbacks, there's nothing that would prohibit them from having that.
So, you, you don't have any problem with the, the additional, I'll say, amenities that have, that are in addition to the basic seven hundred square foot cabin? Okay?
This is Larry. Looking at all the drawings, is the drain field definitely within the boundaries of your existing lot? I, I'm not getting a clear picture on...
Yeah.
Okay. Where do they find all these?
Looks like it's really tight to that line on the east side.
It's our lot, the line, just because...
It's our lot, the line just because of that kinda goes like that.
Okay, this picture shows it, okay, very good.
Not seeing, you're just seeing by the cabin, but then it went like that.
Right, yes.
So it's definitely in ours.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions or comments?
Are you gonna do public comment?
I did.
Oh, oh, you, you said, well, then I have more questions.
Okay.
My issue with what you have, if I do the math on the active area between the hundred-foot setback and all your garages and stuff, I calculate somewhere between forty and fifty percent impervious surface. Okay? That says there's a lot of rainwater that's gonna have to go somewhere. I don't remember when I was out there, does the current cabin and garages have rain gutters at all? It all runs onto the surface?
No, they don't. They, it, it, it does all run onto the surface.
Where does it go for one, on your surface?
It goes down. It's all gravel and sand.
So not down by the water, but soaks into the ground?
It is absorbed immediately. It's, it's all, it's all gravel and sand, you know. Did you notice the, the, across thirty-nine, there's a sand pit over there? It's, it's, this area right there is just all sand.
But you're gonna, you're gonna add this probably twenty-three-hundred square feet with deck-proposed house, literally you have used up the entire surface. I am concerned that you must have runoff down over that bank down to the lake. And there's not a lot of vegetation that I see down there, a couple of cart paths. I'm personally concerned, don't quite know how to address it in a condition, but somehow or another, I'd like to be assured that the water running off all your structures that close to that steep bank, if you will, is not gonna run down into the lake.
Well, the, I guess, the, the property was purchased in sixty-two. My dad, at the time, decided that he wanted to have a boathouse. So he hired a guy to come in and, and put the road or the path down to the lake.
But that's, my issue is, when you build this additional home and you have this guest cabin, two garages, driveway, a lot of matted-down area, I'm finding it hard to believe all of it sinks in right there. It's gotta run someplace. Is it running away from the lake or towards the lake?
Okay, and that's what I, that's what I started to tell you. He put, he put a path down there and my dad, as he, as he got into his eighties, he was, he was constantly on his lawn tractor. He rode the lawn tractor everywhere along the property. Consequently, he was going up and down that bank, and it was very hard. It was very hard to keep grass growing there. We worked hard at it, but in all the time, and I'm serious about this, in all the time that, that we've owned the property and had that, that modified bank in place, there has been no evidence of, of runoff into the lake. It just, there, there have been a few times when maybe it went down as far as the, the shore and it washed a little bit. But, you know, it, it, it's been, it's been remarkably absorbent over the years. That's all I can tell you. I, I, we haven't, we haven't filled, we haven't had washouts that needed to be repaired. We haven't filled in. It's just, it's just been, it's been good.
What's the vegetation like on the hillside in, in the summertime? Now it looks like it's pretty sparse, that there's not much resistance to any kind of runoff that would exist.
Yeah, yeah, well, it, like, all I can tell you is that in the past, it, it has, has sunk in. It's just been absorbed.
This is Veronica speaking, so I guess Ken needs clarification on the, the little cart path that's coming down towards the boathouse. Do you have like two different paths going on? Are they vegetated with grass? Do they have, is there, I mean, is it mostly grass or is it mostly a, a sand walkway?
No, it's, it's grass.
Cause during the lot views, I noticed it looked like it has mostly grass. I didn't see an actual path of where it's, you're walking or driving, but just, that's the clarification I think Ken is wanting, is what vegetation is growing down that slope?
Yeah, and it's, it is grass and, you know, in, in this country, you know, with, with the sand and gravel, it's, it's pretty hard to maintain the vegetation. So we're cognizant of the fact that if, you know, there's traffic. Basically, I don't, I don't go, I don't use the path with any mechanized equipment other than to just go down there to mow the grass and then go back up.
The question is, the edge of the bank where it starts down, is that a higher elevation sloping backwards to your buildings or is the property...
It's flat.
It's flat.
With a slight rounded edge. I, you know, I, I guess I don't know, it's...
During lot views, I didn't see any erosion, so yeah.
I'm concerned with the high impervious surface that close to the, to the bank that could runoff into the lake. If nobody else has any big concern or whether we...
I, I see what you're saying, Ken, in freezing conditions, and now we're adding a big impervious? Couple thousand square feet?
Yeah.
Where's it gonna go?
And I'm, I mean, if the applicants are willing, I'm, I understand placing a condition that gutters be placed on, you know, the lakeside of the house to direct it away. That, that seems reasonable to do at least one side.
That would be one of my suggestions as a conditions, that, that, at least on the new structure and the, and the guest cabin, that rain gutters be placed to direct the water away from the lake.
I don't have a problem with that. I, I, you know, I, I just, because the, it's one of those things that it was a little bit off my radar because, like I said, we haven't had an issue. So I, I just, you know, I was, I was a little bit...
You're gonna cut down a bunch of trees, you're gonna now make that all impervious surface, that area.
I know it'll change.
What I believe probably is where a lot of it is sitting now today between the two structures. The big garage seemed to be setback far enough that it probably ran away, but the rest of it I was, I'm concerned about, that's all.
Yeah, and I, you know, I just, it's, like I said, it's not, it wasn't on my radar, you know, I could...
But you're, you're open to that condition, that rain gutters be placed on the cabin and the proposed new structure on the lakeside to direct stormwater away from the lake? You would be open to that?
Yes, yes. And in fact, be, because the deck is fairly new, that area around, basically, we're using, we're, you know, we have been using the partial basement a little bit more for storage. There, there ends up being more stuff down there. So I've been a little bit concerned about the water, the runoff from the cabin, and I certainly am concerned about the water dripping on the deck all the time. So it was kind of my to-do list to contact a gutter person, so, you know, it...
It's a win-win.
It, well, yeah, it, it, it's certainly, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Question, the, the drawing that he, that's in the packet that I believe shows your new house, and shows front elevation, that's as I drive in your driveway, that's what I will see. That's considered the front? This one here, when it says front elevation, that's the side as you see driving in? That's not the lakeside of it?
That's not the lakeside.
I'm satisfied.
All right, anybody else have any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go right ahead, Mike.
This is Mike, I'll make the motion that we approve this variance application with the following conditions. That the guest cabin must never be enlarged and that the property can never be subdivided, is the first. The second is that the shower needs to be disconnected and if it is ever, remain disconnected, and if ever connected again, it has to be put into the septic system. And that gutters be put on the lakeside of both the new structure and the cabin and the water directed away from the lake. And I'll accept the staff's findings of facts.
Okay, and Mike, can you please include on your condition number one to, the guest cottage may never be enlarged, including decks and platforms?
Including decks and platforms.
Okay, that'll be great. And on the septic, should we put that as far as giving it like maybe a deadline, like when the land use permit is required or, you know, obtained, that the septic is at the same time, they can make that decision then for their ex shower?
Yes, I'll accept that.
Okay. Anybody care to make a second?
This is Larry, I'll second that.
Mike made a motion to approve the application as presented with the condition that the guest cottage must never be enlarged, including decks and platforms, and the property could never be subdivided. Number two was retaining the exterior shower on the guest cottage must be connected to the septic at the time, if you're going to keep it, at the time that your land use permit is applied for when you do your septic. That way you have some time to do your septic when that's obtained. And then number three, rain gutters be placed on both the cabin and the new residential structure of the lakeside to direct stormwater away from the lake. And we adopted the staff's findings of facts, I will take a vote. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye. Your variance was approved, you'll receive a letter from the Environmental Services Office and give you a, a decision letter, so, okay?
I have a question?
Yes, sir.
The, the conditions as far as the pro, the property never being subdivided, is that something that has to be formally entered on a deed? Or is there some sort of document that has to be filed with the county? Or just, it's just an agreement and...
It'll be listed as a condition of the variance and then the variance decision is required to be recorded with the county recorder's office. So anybody, whoever looks at the property doing abstracting, will see that variance in the condition.
And then the gutters are gonna add a square feet to the cabin?
It, it'll be fine, gutters aren't included on that, you're just fine.
The cabin, it's a footprint issue, so the gutters don't, and overhangs don't, aren't the issue with the cabin.
I don't know, I, I'm, part of that, part of that footprint, you know, the entryway, I mean, the, the interior space is only ten by six.
The exterior overhangs count as part of the square footage for the guest cottage factor here, but the gutters would not enter into that calculations.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you very much. Miscellaneous and communications?
Nothing under miscellaneous communications as far as next month's meeting. We have two conditional use permit applications, one for the school that the ordinance was recently amended to allow that use as a conditional use. And the second is for a professional services business with a vet clinic that the ordinance had also been recently amended to allow that on a natural environment lake. And then as far as variances, I'm still in the course of reviewing those in six to eight maybe. So not huge, but not lean either.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, this is Mike. I won't be able to make the lot view next month, I'll do that on my own. I'll be out of town that day. But I will, I do plan on being here on the, at the meeting Monday night, so I'll just tour those on my own.
Thank you for that information. Okay, does anybody care to make a motion to adjourn?
This is Larry, I move to adjourn.
This is Veronica, I second the motion. Larry made a motion to adjourn, I second it. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, meeting adjourned.